Really? I haven't heard that one.
Seven o'clock, we'll call the regular session of the Lewisville City Council meeting to order. First item is invocation given by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Tierney and followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Please rise. Join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledges to the flags. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which stands one nation, an under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I declare the city of Texas one state, one God, one indivisible.
I've got a short statement I want to read before the, we introduce the graduation of the two hundred, 2015, 2016 Lewisville Citizens University Members. One of the more difficult challenges any city faces is how to educate its residents about what the city does and how the city functions. Let's be honest, city operations aren't always a world of excitement, but having residents who are educated and engaged is important for a city that wants to pursue a vision. Members of the Lewisville 2025 Committee spent a good bit of time talking about ways to improve in that area. One key recommendation included in the Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan was to create a Citizens University. Tonight, I am proud to recognize the first group of residents to complete the Lewisville Citizens University. These eleven men and women have met monthly for nearly a year to learn about many different facets of their city. Special recognition goes to the six members who registered perfect attendance. Has Citizens, has Citizens University worked the way it was intended in the Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan? Our graduates can tell you themselves about how much they have learned and about how much better they understand their city. What I can tell you is that one of the original seventeen members of the class, five have been appointed by City Council to serve on city boards, and one will become a member of the City Council later this month. So from my perspective, it is working better than anyone could have hoped. The next class starts up this fall. I encourage any resident wanting to learn more about their city to consider signing up. Thank you. I'm gonna call out, I'm gonna read the first one here, first certificate out today, and then I'll start calling the names out if you'd come forward, call your name. The Lewisville Citizens University awards this certificate to a pleasanat, too, and will fill in the blank for all the ones involved, in recognition of your commitment to completing the Lewisville Citizens University comprehensive curriculum. Your participation in this leadership development and community education program demonstrates your interest in municipal government services operations and decision-making processes. This accomplishment displays your community pride and spirit. With respect and appreciation, the Lewisville City Council and staff seek your continued participation in these civic affairs. By the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, I have issued this honor on the second day of May 2016. First one I have up is Kathy Doyle. If you'd hold the applause till we get through all of them, that may work better. Douglas Hicks. John Ling.
Thank you for doing it. Thank you so much.
William Meredith.
Thank you.
Kent Moore. Gail Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Denise Shepherd. Audra Smol, sorry, I even had this right, Audra Smolinski. I thought about it too much.
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Tanya Siboba. Russell Tyson. We also have one Bernard King, and he couldn't make it tonight, so thank you most. We're gonna change things up a little bit for the proclamations tonight, and for the near future, anyway. We're gonna have a council member come up and do the proclamations, and tonight, since there are five of them, we'll have Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
First proclamation tonight is for Denton County Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Anyone here with that organization, I'd invite you to come join me. The proclamation reads, whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Denton County, and whereas the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility, and whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being, and whereas the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, Denton County MHMR Center, United Way of Denton County, and the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's through their prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, does hereby proclaim May 5th, 2016, as Denton County Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Congratulations. If one of you would like to say something?
Sure, I will. Thank you so much for helping us bring awareness to children's mental health. We know that one in five children at least struggle with a mental health issue in their lifetime, and so many more of us throughout the community are affected by that. And so that's why all of us from the Watch Coalition, led by Cook Children's, the Behavioral Health Leadership Team, led by United Way, and Denton County MHMR are proud to work together to improve children's mental health across the county, and we appreciate the support from the City of Lewisville.
Absolutely, thank you. Next, National Police Week, everyone here for that proclamation, if you'll join me.
Whereas there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Lewisville Police Department, and whereas since the first reported death in 1791, more than twenty thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas 252 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial this spring, including 123 officers killed in 2015 and 129 officers killed in the previous year, and whereas more officers were killed in the line of duty in Texas totaling twelve than any other state in 2015. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown and have staffed. Now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th, 2016, as National Police Week, and on May 15th, 2016, as Police Memorial Day in the City of Lewisville, and urge all citizens to make every effort to express heartfelt appreciation to the men and women who have sacrificed their lives to guard us and our loved ones against all who would violate the law.
I'll give this to Chief Kerbo.
Thanks, sir.
So next, I have Building Safety Month. Is anyone here with Building Safety Month? The end of proclamation, whereas our city's efforts to address the issues of safety, energy efficiency, and water conservation give us confidence that our structures are safe, and whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of dedicated members of the International Code Council, and whereas Building Safety Month, sponsored by the International Code Council, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety and conservation, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies, and whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and properties. Now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, along with the members of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2016, as Building Safety Month. Congratulations.
Just felt that it was appropriate that we introduce these folks that are out there every day, they're the boots on the ground, to make sure that all the businesses, all the residents are safe, that they're built appropriately, and that they're maintained appropriately. I'd like to reiterate what Councilman said, that these folks in their career are gonna save more lives than any single agency with their actions. I think it's even more appropriate that it's also tonight, that the new set, new addition of building codes and fire codes are before the council for adoption. So I just thought we should appreciate these folks for what they do. Thank you.
Is anyone here tonight with National Drinking Water Week? I have a proclamation to read. Whereas, oh, there's four of you. We'll step on up.
Gotta get the first one to go.
Don't be shy. I have a proclamation, whereas water is a basic and essential need of all humankind and all living things to sustain life, and whereas water is a limited resource that should be used wisely, and the water supply protected by preventing pollution and conserving water, and whereas public works and utilities provide essential services needed for the protection of health and welfare of our community as, as part of their everyday lives, and whereas the support of a satisfied and informed citizenry is vital to the professional operation of the public works, utility system, and essential programs such as water production and distribution, wastewater treatment and collection, environmental services, streets and storm drainage, traffic and fleet operations, and public building and facilities, and whereas the quality and capability of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and the skill of public services employees, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and committed personnel who staff the Public Services Department is significantly influenced by citizen attitudes and appreciation of the important work they perform, now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through 7th, 2016, as National Drinking Water Week, and May 15th through 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens and civic organizations to understand and recognize the contribution of Public Services Department in providing for our daily utility needs and protecting the health, safety, and well-being of our community. Thank you, gentlemen. So would one of you like to say anything?
I'd like to thank the mayor, City Council, City Manager for your continued support and making us a successful department.
Thank you very much. Absolutely, our pleasure. Thank you. I have one final proclamation for Texas Travel and Tourism Week, and besides Mr. Conkey, is there anyone here? So we only spent the whole last week together, so. I wanna trip. So whereas travel spending in Texas totaled sixty-nine billion in 2015, directly supporting six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand jobs statewide, and generating six-point-two billion, that is six-point-two billion in state and local taxes, and whereas the Dallas-Fort Worth area is the second-ranked tourism destination in Texas, with more than thirty-five-point-eight million visitors in 2014, generating more than one-point-one billion in 2014 in state and local tax revenue, and whereas Lewisville is rapidly increasing its profile within the region to attract leisure visitors that support the city's more than twenty-four-hundred hotel rooms, two-hundred-and-fifty restaurants, and hundreds of retail businesses, and whereas the Governor's Office of Economic Development and Tourism has declared the first week of May to be Texas Travel and Tourism Week, as a way to recognize the contributions of the travel industry and the vast economic potential of tourism, now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, along with the members of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through 7th, 2016, as Texas Travel and Tourism Week. Congratulations.
So I'm accepting this on behalf of our hotel and attraction partners throughout Lewisville, and many people might not think of Lewisville as a traditional travel destination, however, in 2015, our travel sector generated more than sixty million dollars worth of spending in Lewisville businesses. So we have a thriving and very successful tourism market, thanks in large part of the support of our mayor and city council.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ferguson.
My pleasure. Thank you.
We're down to Section E, Public Hearings, Item One, Public Hearing, Consideration of an Ordinance Granting a Zone Change Request from General Business District to Old Town Mixed Use Two District on Two Tracks of Land Totalling Approximately Point Six Three Two Three Acres, Located on the East Side of Charles Street Between Elm and Houston. Comments, the requested zone change allows for mixed use of commercial and residential that would be part of the larger South Village development. The zone change complies with the Old Town Master Plan P&amp;Z Recommendation, approved by a vote of five to zero. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And we have Nika Riddicki on with the, if there's any questions, and is Mr. Ramani here? With Pat Hager? Okay. So if there's no questions now, Mr. Vaughn, if you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, so moved that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Vaughn.
May I make a recommendation that the council approve the ordinance as set forth?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, by rezoning two tracks of land totaling approximately Point Six Three Two Three Acres, legally described as Lot Two, Block A, Lewisville Center, Lewisville Center Edition, and a portion of the J.W. King Survey, Abstract Number Six Nine Six, located on the east side of Charles Street between Elm Street and Houston Street, from general business district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use Two District zoning, correcting the official zoning map preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand this zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item Two, Public Hearing, Consideration of an Ordinance Granting a Zone Change Request from Old Town Mixed Use Two District to Parking District on an Approximately Point Two Six Four Acre Track of Land Located at Five Forty-One East Main Street. Comments, the requested zone change is for the rear of the property to resolve employee and customer parking issues for the adjacent property. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and Mr. Lucky, do you have a presentation on this?
Mayor, we have a, we have a prepared presentation if the council would like to see it, otherwise, we're here for questions, and the applicant is also here for questions.
Okay, does anyone here like to see that? You do?
No.
No, I don't think anybody will see it right now, but y'all are available questions. And Alex Salguero is here, the property owner, if there's any questions. Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
The portion of this property that's gonna be designated parking for the adjoining paint and body shop, twenty parking spaces, if I remember correctly, my question is, once the property is developed in the front with the proposed two, two-story buildings, how will the parking for that, those businesses in those two-story buildings and the twenty spaces for the paint shop be compatible?
Okay. Why don't we, Nika, why don't we start with you on that?
Sure, the parking will then be shared with the businesses, with both businesses, because they're both owned by the same owner, same company. Now, if there's going to be an overflow parking, then the, the repair shop will have to find another area for parking their cars or reduce their cars that are going to stay overnight.
They get the question answered. Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Cars that are parked overnight, I'm not sure what you mean, Nika.
So I think right now, there's some, this is going to be used for some customer parking and some cars that may be parked on the property overnight, when the cars are completely finished at the repair shop.
And so.
The short answer is they will share the parking, basically.
Is there gonna be technically enough parking for the two businesses, or how many ever businesses, and the paint shop?
It all depends on the occupancy of those new businesses when they come in, so we're going to have to recalculate that when they come in, and both entities will have to make allowances at the time.
Thank you, Nika.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Daniels?
I make, oh, make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Daniels?
Like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilman Gilmore.
This is, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, by rezoning an approximately Point Two Six Four acre track of land, legally described as a portion of Lot Nine R, Block Twenty-Two, Keely Edition, located on the north side of East Main Street, west of Railroad Street, at Five Four One East Main Street.
541 East Main Street, from Old Town Mixed Use Two District zoning to Parking District zoning, correcting the official zoning map preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest in general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. Mr. Salguero, I want to thank you for working with the city on this, to sort this problem out in a way that I think satisfied your needs and also satisfied the city, so I think this is a win-win, and I'm very pleased with the way it happened.
Good. Thank you. Visitor Citizens Forum, at this time, any person with business before the City Council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No forum will actually be taken on these items, and I don't have any requests to speak. Item G, Consent Agenda, all of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. And we do have one request to pull item five, and why don't we go ahead and vote on the other ones? If, Councilman Tierney, you have for the other items there?
Move to approve the consent with the exception of item five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilman Gilmore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item five is approval of a resolution affirming support for the Lewisville ISD in seeking fair and appropriate methods for educating local students. Administrative comments: Councilman Gilmore had requested that the City Council consider supporting LISD in their efforts to promote fairness and consistency in the state testing and to seek restitution for the expenses incurred attempting to correct grading errors made on the state standardized test. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, thank you. We have a couple of representatives from the ISD tonight, and I wanted to make sure that we recognized Dr. Brockman and trustee Temish. I always, whenever I'm on the spot, I mess her name up, so my apologies, Cranda. I don't know if anybody's been following this, but we have some challenges in this state with how our educational system is designed for funding, as well as the testing system. When you spend 1.1 billion dollars and do nothing but create stressed-out children, I think that's wrong. And when you have a test that comes back with children failing, and then you send them back to be regraded, and magically these children suddenly are passing the exam, oh, and by the way, you get to spend an extra 50 grand to find that out, and you have to travel to Austin because they won't allow you to see the documentation, there's a problem. Lewisville is not the entirety of the ISD, but it holds our name, and I think it is incumbent on us to make sure that we support it as fully as we can, and I really appreciate the council backing this, and thank you to the trustee and the administrators for coming out here tonight to receive that proclamation. I hope it goes a long way.
Would anybody like to come up and speak? And if you wouldn't, name an address for the record, please.
I'm Dr. Beth Brockman.
It'll get there eventually.
Yes. I'm Dr. Beth Brockman with Lewisville ISD. I'm also a Lewisville resident at 1693 Castle Rock. I just want to share my appreciation for the City Council really joining forces with us and doing what we feel is best for kids, as well as the district and the communities that we serve. These tests are high stakes for our kids. They have to pass them in order to graduate, but they're also high stakes for our schools, our district, and our communities, in that they will be used to put a rating, or eventually a letter grade, on the campuses that we so appreciate having in our local communities. And if that's the way the tests are going to be used, they have to have assurances on how they're graded. And when we discover large numbers that are graded inappropriately, yet we have to pay to have them regraded, it's hard, it's a hard pill to bear. So we appreciate your support. We value Lewisville as a trusted partner, and I know that you feel the same way about the school district, so thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks for being here. Trustee Temish, you want to come up? You don't have to. Name an address for the record.
Cranda Temish, and I'm also a Lewisville resident at 2516 Sur Tristram. I so appreciate all of your support. Lewisville does bear our name for the school district. You've always been there to support us, and I really appreciate this. TJ, thank you for really leading the charge on this, because it's really starting to garner momentum for this. Because LISD is an accelerated block, we're almost the canary in the tunnel, we're the first one in the, in the state of the few school districts that have already had this and getting the test results back. So I'm really hoping that we can make a difference for all the school districts that are going to be affected by this. So thank you for partnering and standing with this, and we hope to make a difference. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve, please, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Now, we're down to regular hearings. Item six, let me count here. Three. Table item, Consideration of an Ordinance Granting a Special Use Permit for Minor Automotive Services and Consideration of Four Associated Variances on Approximately 1.212 acre lot located at the northwest corner of FM 3040 and State Highway 121 Business. I've read the comments for quite a few occasions already. Recommendation that City Council approve the ordinance and variances as set forth in the caption above. And we do have, again, Nika Reddicki with the City Economic Development, and Steve Meyer with Hummel Investments. And Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh, no, it's, it's a hearing, so we got to close the public hearing? No, it's a regular hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Sorry. Move to approve is written?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Get it right, right?
It's such a habit to table it that you hardly know what to do.
Is there any discussion this time? Okay, let's get moving. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for minor automotive services consisting of a freestanding Goodyear Auto Care Facility on a 1.21 acre lot, legally described as Lot 1, Block G, Carrington Village Edition Phase 2, located on the northwest corner of FM 3040 and State Highway 121 Business, zoned general business district, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Is the store owner here from Goodyear?
He's not here tonight.
He's not here tonight? I want to thank him for following through on this, because it would have been real easy to maybe go somewhere else or make another change somewhere. So I want to thank him for that. Item seven, Consideration of Variance to the 1996, 1996 Castle Hills Agreement Regarding the Elimination of the Ten-Foot Parallel Loading and Unloading Lanes Around the Facility Located at 4900 Sam Rayburn Tollway. Comments: Under the 1996 Castle Hills Agreement, self-storage facilities provide a ten-foot parallel loading and unloading lane around the facility. The applicant requires a variance to allow the use of 37 head-end 9-by-18 parking stalls instead of the required ten-foot parallel loading and unloading lane. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the requested variances set forth in the caption above with no conditions. And we have Cleve Joyner, Director of Neighborhood Services, here for questions if we have any. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Number eight, Consideration of An Ordinances Amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter Four, Adopting the 2015 International Construction Codes with Local Amendments and Standards, Including the Building Code, Residential Building Code, Plumbing Code, Fuel Gas Code, Mechanical Code, Energy Code, Existing Building Codes, Chapter Nine, Property Management Code, and Chapter Five, Fire Code. Comments: These new codes are necessary to ensure the city keeps pace with state laws, changing technology, and practice of the construction industry. Recommendation is that the City Council adopt the 2015 edition of the International Construction Codes with Local Amendments and Standards as set forth in the caption above. And we do have Cleve Joyner, Director of Neighborhood Service, available for questions. Are there any questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask Cleve.
Okay.
I think I asked partially this question in the workshop, and.
Cleve, could you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
The amendments and codes that are being adopted are the Building Code and the existing Building Code.
Yes, sir.
Can you clarify that for me?
The existing.
And the existing code that we're keeping, or the whole thing on top of the new code?
Yes, sir. In this addition of the Building Code, they took Chapter 54, which has always been the existing Building Code chapter, and made it its own separate document. Really doesn't change anything, it's just now it's a separate document, it's not part of the Building Code itself.
I'd like to clarify, the existing Building Code is for existing buildings, buildings that are already constructed, correct?
Correct.
Whereas the Building Codes are for buildings that will be constructed.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you, Cleve. Thank you.
Did I answer the question? Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion that we approve as stated.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor?
And if you'll bear with me, there are six ordinances. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the 2015 International Building Code and its appendices E, F, G, J, K, adopting the 2015 Energy Conservation Code, adopting the 2015 International Residential Code and its appendices A, B, C, D, E, G, J, K, M, O, P, T, U, adopting local amendments to these codes, amending Sections 4-26, 4-28, 4-29, 4-30, 4-31, and 4-32 to Article 2 of Chapter 4 of the Lewisville City Code, maintaining sprinkler requirements for townhomes, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, adopting the 2015 International Existing Building Code and its appendices A, B, and C, adopting this code to Article 2 of Chapter 4 of the Lewisville City Code, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing a penalty, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending Article 3, Electrical Standards, Section 4-46, 4-47, 4-48 of the Code of Ordinances of the City, of the City by adopting the National Electrical Code 2014 Edition published by the National Fire Protection Association and related matters, and deleting the current language in Section 4-46, 4-47, and 4-48, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, adopting the 2015 International Mechanical Code with local amendments, amending Sections 4-131 and 4-132 of Article 5 of Chapter 4 of the Lewisville City Code, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the City Council, City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, adopting the 2015 International Fire Code with local amendments, amending Sections 5-91, 5-92, and 5-94.5 of Chapter 5, Article 3 of the Lewisville City Code, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, adopting the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, and C, adopting this code to Article 4 of Chapter 9, the Lewisville City Code, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
And we'll come back with another one at some other point, I'm sure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, Consideration of Resolution Nominating a Representative and an Alternate Representative to the NCTC Council of Governments, Regional Transportation Council. Administrative Comments: The current representative to the RTC is Mayor Durham, who has indicated his willingness to serve again. The current alternate is representative is Mayor Charlotte Wilcox of Highland Village, who has also indicated her interest to continue serving. Recommendation is that the City Council consider a resolution nominating a representative and an alternate representative to the Lewisville, excuse me, to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Transportation Council. Councilman Daniels?
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution nominating Mayor Durham and Mayor Wilcox for the representative and alternate to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Transportation Committee.
Okay.
Second.
Councilman Gilmore, or Councilman Tierney, on the second on there. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 10, Consideration of Acceptance of Resignation of Brandon Jones from Place Number Two on the Planning and Zoning Commission and Place Number Four on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two. Declare vacancies exist and consider appointments. Comments: Brandon Jones will be sworn into Place Number Four of the Lewisville City Council on May 16, 2016. Therefore, he has submitted notice of his resignation from Place Number Two on the P&amp;Z and Place Number Four on the TERS Number Two. The City Council would like to declare, excuse me, the City Council will need to declare the vacancies and consider new appointments to fill both vacancy. And recommendation is that the City Council accept the resignations and declare vacancies and consider appointments as set forth in the caption above. The City Secretary, do you have any comments on this right now?
We just need to make sure we appoint both places, both the planning and zoning and the tourism.
Okay. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the resignation, declare the vacancy, and to appoint John Ling to Place Number Two on the P&amp;Z and Place Number Four on the TERS Number Two.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11, Consideration of Appointments to the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team. Comments: The Denton County United Way joined the City of Denton to launch a countywide leadership team focused on the growing homelessness issues, and has requested the appointment of one representative from the Lewisville City Council and one representative from staff or from the community to serve on the team. Councilman Gilmore and Assistant City Manager Claire Swan have expressed interest in serving. Recommendation is the City Council appoint Assistant City Manager Swan and consider appointing Councilman TJ Gilmore to the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Program.
Mayor, if I might, we did have a request from Representatives of the United Way that rather than a staff member, that you consider Chaz Parker, who's the CEO of Christian Community Action, in lieu of that staff position.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gilmore, if you would just disregard what I said when I was just blindly following along, so, Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I'd be, I'd be happy to move for those people to, but I don't know if that's, is that etiquette? I'm moving for me being on that, that board. Okay, I'll make the motion then, myself and Mr. Parker from CCA.
Okay. You have a second, my, Councilman Tierney? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Now, we're down to reports. Nika? Nika? Nothing. Chief?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to remind everybody that a week from this Thursday and Friday, which will be May the 12th and 13th, we will be hosting our 9th Annual Keeping Tradition Alive, Pipes and Drum and Honor Guard Symposium at the Hilton Garden Inn, and would like to invite all of you to join us Thursday morning for opening ceremonies. Actually, come a little early and have breakfast with us, and then the opening ceremonies will start at 8:15. We'd love to have you there. We'll have a guest speaker at the sympos, or at the opening ceremonies. He's actually a SEAL, or a past SEAL Team member. He's spoken one of our banquets before. He's a very good speaker. He's really good to listen to, so please come join us for that. And if you can't make that, or if you can, also join us Friday night for our Pipes and Drums Jam Session here in Old Town. We'll be doing it over in the Wayne Ferguson Plaza and Park area this year. We'll have the guys, like they always do, getting up on stage and playing their pipes and drums and practicing what they've learned over the last two days. But also, we'll have a band, it's called Texas Flood. They're Stevie Ray Vaughan cover band, so we're going to listen to them this year. I've heard they're a really good band, so please come join us for that event as well. There'll be food and drinks that can be purchased at the event. Obviously, by moving over in the plaza, there'll be more parking around this area, so it should be a lot easier to find a place to park, and we look forward to good weather and hoping that you can join us.
Ms. Connor? Russ?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor, the lake level right now is at 524.9, so 2.9 feet above conservation.
Okay, good. Dana? Martin? Eric?
Just a quick update for the intersection of College and Mill. That engineering did get the contractor to put additional pavement markings down with arrows and buttons, taking out that inside lane. All signs have been flagged, so we hope this will help. We still are feeling complaints on that. We'll continue to do that, and we're observing that intersection. Also, we're missing some no-through truck traffic on westbound college, and we'll get those up shortly.
Thank you. Counselor Daniels?
Yes, Mayor, I don't know if I'm jumping the gun a week early or a council meeting early on this. If I am, then I'd be glad to reiterate it again next time. But I want to express some thanks to Counselor Tierney. He's been a great role model. I've only been on the council for a year now, and I find his care and concern for the citizens exemplary. And a lot of what people don't see behind the scenes, it's impressive how he really cares for the city. And I mean, working 15 years for it, he has nothing but my respect, and we'll miss you on the council.
Thank you.
Counselor Tierney?
Mayor, it's just, it's been my pleasure, being a council member for 15 years. It's been an honor serving citizens. Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore?
Mayor, I've got a quick announcement here. For those of you who follow this stuff, we have a poet laureate in our fair city. And Mr. Holcomb has done a phenomenal job. He's had a two-year term, and his term is up this year, but actually in September 1st. The city is now accepting applications for our next poet laureate, and they are due by 5:00 PM on Wednesday, May 25th. You can actually hop onto the city website, cityoflewisville.com, and in the news section, just look for poet laureate, or search, use the search tool and type in poet, because laureate's kind of hard to spell. So with that, I'm done.
City Manager?
Mayor and Counsel, we certainly have more sad news. Our city attorney, Ron Neiman, he was city attorney for 37 years with our organization. He retired in 2010. He did pass away on Saturday after a very, very brief illness. His memorial will be this Thursday at 3:00 PM at Mulkey Mason. Ron was an avid University of Texas fan, and he has requested that we all be dressed in burnt orange on Thursday. And I think he's laughing at me up there right now, because for this Red Raider to put on burnt orange is going to be painful, but I'm going to do it for him. So I did want to share that information with the community.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. Because I don't know if there'll be an opportunity. Brent, thanks for pointing that out. Greg, I'm going to miss you really well. You have a remarkable ability to ferret out things that others don't see. You're very analytical. I think your dedication is absolute. I think you've done a great job for the city. I'll miss you, but I'll still see you around. But it's been a pleasure to serve with you. It's been a pleasure to learn from you. And I hope happy trails for you, and maybe we'll see you again.
Thank you.
MCL Grand, Wednesday, May the 4th. We have a one-man show, The Lion of Texas, presented by Sam Houston. Saturday, May 14th, Texas Tunes presents Michael Martin Murphy, returning again. That show has sold out, so if you don't have tickets, I guess you're not going to see it. Public events, Thursday, May 5th, Gardening Secrets Class, Composting, presented by Keep Louisville Beautiful. Thursday, May 12th, Bad Band Me On will have a hiring event, so a great opportunity. They'll be filling quite a few positions. Of course, we brought up May 13th, KTA, which will be phenomenal, as it always is. Great entertainment, a lot of fun. Tuesday, May 10th, Old Town Block Party is something new, so invite people to turn out, whether they live in Old Town or not, for that event. And then, Saturday, May 21st, have something else going on, a family picnic in the plaza, in Wayne Ferguson Plaza. So a lot of things, KTA, the Old Town Block Party, Family Plaza, Murphy, there's a lot of things going on in Old Town. Art Exhibits, we have Recycled into Art in the Education Wing, that's also known as the North Gallery, May 5th through July 2nd, and Strictly Texas, May 7th through the 13th, in the main gallery. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Vaughn?
Mayor, I'd also like to say to Greg that he's going to be dearly missed. I sat next to him for my four-plus years on the council, and he was a quiet man. He didn't have a lot to say, but when he did, it was pertinent and on point. And that will be sorely missed. He will be sorely missed also as a friend of mine, and I look forward to him, seeing him around the community, and I wish him nothing but the best going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor?
Counselor Tierney, I want to reiterate what everybody else is saying. I'm going to miss you. I feel like we grew up together here. I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate you. You'll be missed.
Secretary?
I extend the same statements to Counselor Tierney. I would definitely miss him, from a friend over the years. I also want to just remind everyone that tomorrow is the last day of early votes. And Saturday will be Election Day, all voting will be at the end. So you've got two more days to vote, so please get out and vote.
Okay. And that's it? Anywhere in the county that's a regular polling place?
For early voting, yes. For Election Day, we'll be all getting this plan as for Louisville.
Okay, thank you. Officer, thanks for your service to the community, and all your teammates there, service officer. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, since not everyone has gotten to say something to Greg, perhaps everyone could stand up and applaud and thank him for his dedicated service?
I have a feeling we're still going to hear from him.
Me too.
He's not that silent.
Next item is closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Item 1, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorneys, Legal Issues Related to Oil and Gas Operations, 2, Section 551.072, Property Acquisition, and Item 3, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. Now go into closed session. We'll reconvene into regular session. Counselor Vaughn, do you have anything?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night. At 6 o'clock, we'll call the median order. City Manager?
So, Mayor, tonight, we have a presentation for you on our Gateway Monument Signs. You remember, this is an item that you approved in this current year's budget. And so, we spend a great deal of time looking at different designs, and we've got one there down to recommend to you. So what we're asking tonight is for your input on the design, and is for locations. Jim Skunki will walk you through the presentation.
Is this the Elvis statue?
He tried to slip that in on me, but I caught it.
That's still on hold. That's still a back further item. So, I want to touch briefly on six items related to this process. First, just a review of the current locations that we are using for Gateway Monument Signs. Talk about the process of how we got to where we are today, to the point where we're ready to make a recommendation. Touch on the money that is set aside in the budget that is allocated for this project. Going to show you the design that is being recommended by staff. Then we will look at briefly what a couple of our neighbors have done for monument signs. And then finally, look at potential locations for new monument signs and what we anticipate those costs to be. So we're going to move fairly quickly through those things. And we'll start with our current locations. Now, these signs were installed back in the early to mid 1990s. They do have the old logo, which we stopped using officially in 2009, although it was a phase-in process. So as you know, it's still at various locations around town. The bigger, more expensive locations still have the old logo in many cases. Fairly simple, it's actually two different designs. You can see on the bottom of the slide here. We have nicknames for them, but I'll just tell you, these are the two different designs we have, and they're not necessarily complementary nicknames. They are low-profile, they are low to the ground, which often means it's difficult to read them, especially with moving traffic. And especially, as you see on the right, if any of the vegetation around it grows up more than about eight inches tall, you start losing the wording. And in addition, they're somewhat dated. They simply don't have, especially the one on the right, they're somewhat dated. They don't really have a contemporary look, and they don't really reflect the branding that we're looking at. So there's the eight locations. One of those, actually, two of those have been removed, one because of highway construction, that's the Garden Ridge location, and one because of, well, because a passing car decided to take our sign out.
It wasn't me.
But these are the eight locations that we have had, and you'll see they're all on major roadways, trying to capture a lot of traffic, especially traffic entering Louisville from other areas. So while we're here today, this actually started back in 2009, and we adopted the current branding package, which includes the current logo. And that was rolled out in a lot of ways, but not a complete, all-in-one-time rollout. So when we did the discussion for the Louisville 2025 Vision Plan, one of the topics of conversation, as you'll see here, was talking about the fact that several logos are still in use, and that there needed to be an effort to go back in and have either, you know, full implementation of the branding and continuity of the logo. Out of that, one of the recommendations from the Louisville 2025 Plan was brand assessment. We hired Cooksey Communication, that came in the next year, in July of 15, and completed their report. And one of their recommendations was replace the signs, so that they all are reflective of the current branding. And you see that recommendation there. If you need a copy of that, this is all in your backup. So with that in place, staff came to you during budget process last year. We took just a rough estimate of about $40,000 per sign, which is a ballpark figure that you see in a lot of areas. And so, we put in, and you approved, over $24,000 and change for the possibility of replacing three signs. So based on that, we've gone forward looking at designs and elements that can be used for these monuments. So just some steps on, these are the criteria we established when we were working on the design. We wanted to have them be contemporary and also be traditional. Louisville is, in many ways, a very contemporary city that has very deep traditional historic roots. We wanted to find a sign that could do both. So a more contemporary look, a little bit more stylized look, more modern, but also using materials and colors that 20 years from now will still be stylish, that you know are going to be solid and still be an attractive appearance for the city in 20 years, 30 years. Wanted to incorporate the current branding. We also wanted to be consistent with the message we've been putting out with the branding package. So we did hire GoGo Creative, that did the original branding package, to work on some design concepts. And we looked at more than a dozen, total about 16, 17, I think, various shapes and sizes. And we came back with some back-and-forth discussion with the designer, and came up with the design that you're going to see today. It is a block shape. When you look at it, it's seven feet wide, eight feet tall, so almost a square, if you were to draw imaginary lines around the edges. For some areas, we might need a very strong vertical, you know, tall, skinny, or we might need a short, wide, horizontal. For the locations we're looking at right now, that's not necessary. We do anticipate in the future, you might have a median that's very narrow and needs a skinny vertical sign, or a building facade or a large roadway right-of-way that needs a long horizontal. So we're going to work on some alternates for those. Right now, we don't have them, because honestly, we don't want to put a lot of time into those, if you don't like what we have. Plus, we don't need it this first year. So, that being said, this is a drawing of the sign. Now, it's a two-sided. What you see here is a stone slab at the bottom that is 30 to 36 inches tall. Those letters are 12 inches. They are set up high off the ground to avoid the vegetation coverage you saw with the current sign on Valley Bridge. You have the stone column on the side, and then that is a metal sail, if you will, that has the cutout of the bird icon and the perforation for the Texas shadow. That's actually the same font that is in the current logo, so it does reflect the current logo, but it's not identical. You'll notice it doesn't use the purple. We did look at purple. Easiest and probably most efficient way to have purple on this would be paint, and paint creates maintenance concerns. Texas is known for blistering heat and pounding hail and fierce winds, often on the same day. And that can mean you're having to constantly repaint because of peeling, or fading, or scratching. And so the maintenance could become an issue with a painted surface. Plus, again, we wanted to find something that would be still stylish and contemporary 10, 20, 30 years down the road. This shows the materials we're looking at. Nobody says Austin stone, that's the look. It's not necessarily a brand. So we're looking for that style, kind of a natural stone look for the column, and a slab for the base. The metal for the letters and for the flag would be some sort of base metal steel or aluminum that would then be coated with a copper-colored coating. Wouldn't be real copper. Real copper is very expensive, and also, people like to take it. So I might- So we might have to put a sign that says, this is not copper. You'll see some buildings now are doing that. Some utilities are putting up little notes saying, this is not real copper.
So please do not steal.
Please don't steal our non-copper. It's a shame you have to do it, but that's that's the world we all have today.
Only have weird signs in this city.
There are some of us. Again, foot, one foot tall for the letters, and then the flag area is three by three and a half. This is actually a model that our artist created, and just because I like the the grandiose reveal, we actually have a reveal for you underneath the the purple gray. That is the model. Double face, so you can see it from either direction as you approach on traffic, in traffic. You'll notice the model is a little bit more white for this, white and gray for the stone. That's just the material she was able to find, but the intent is that it be more of this, this more of an earth tone, a little bit more of a tanish, ochre-ish, tight color. But that is the model right there. In in reality, the Texas shadow will have a little bit more of a fade to it than it does here, but it's hard when you're poking a pin through cardboard to get that kind or through foam board to get a fade. But there's a a metal sculpture at the Portland Airport that has exactly what I have in mind, where the holes are bigger and then get gradually smaller and create that kind of gradient. And the wood is just to hold it in place down at the bottom. So here's some of our neighbors. Highland Village are fairly new. They put these two signs up on twenty-four ninety-nine. They did a million dollar project, and of that million dollars, a hundred and eight thousand roughly was for these signs. It's the wall that stretches along through the median, and then they added on the signage in the front and some landscaping. So fifty-four thousand dollars for that sign that you see right there. And there's a, I believe there's just a pair on either end of twenty-four ninety-nine.
Are those lit?
Yes.
Are they landing lit or lit in?
I think only the logo is lit, but I'm not driven by it.
Yeah, not the entire sign, the logo. The front of it is lit.
Do you know if it's an exterior lamp or if it's internally lit?
It is exterior.
It's exterior, yeah. I think you can actually see them in the picture. Go back one time.
I think this little yellow item here possibly or green. Do you know why I say yellow? Can't see.
Okay.
Now, for sure, the Capel ones are. Here's Capel. This also was part of a larger project. They did a five million dollar project that included signage and median work. So they did these signs with lighting and landscaping. I guess the landscaping is the tree behind it. But they did the sign, the landscaping, the lighting for thirty-one thousand. Very simple. This is almost like our current monument style, except it stretched taller and skinnier. Very similar approach, though. And there's another one. I guess here the landscaping is easier to see. The lighting, not so much. And there's this thirty-one thousand, again, part of a larger project. So here's locations that we think are potential spots for these signs. You'll see it says nine on there. It's actually ten locations, and I'll explain that in a moment. Couple of things to look at on here. First, these are listed by traffic counts. Traffic count is not necessarily how you're going to want to choose where to put a sign, but this is just, you have to list them somehow. Something's got to be first. So we put them by traffic counts. And traffic counts can be a a major factor. You want people to see it, but also sometimes there might be a place that might have a lower traffic count, but for other reasons, you want to have a higher visibility.
And we got these traffic counts from the COG. Where's Key? You got these for us? There he is.
Yeah, most of them are from the COG. Some of them are our data if it was more current.
Okay.
And you'll see some of these date back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, so the numbers presumably would be higher now. But this gives you a pretty big ballpark of where we are. Couple other notes for you. You see the two that have asterisks next to them? Those are state roadways that we would have to get text out of approval. So the busiest one is F M four oh seven, and we actually are looking at doing some median work along there as part of the beautification grant from the state. And this could be part of that, but it would require state approval. So when we were working on this, it might not be your first choice because it could take a while to get the state to approve something, and that could delay the project. But maybe they just say yes and go ahead. And then also Round Grove Road or thirty forty down near Flower Mount. Most of these are existing locations. The difference is four oh seven is not an existing location. Round Grove Road near Flower Mount is not an existing location. And Valley Parkway north of Business one twenty-one, that's down there by the new Bed Bath and Beyond facility. And that's an example of a fairly low traffic count it's going to pick up. Fairly low traffic count, but it's had a location where perhaps you want those Bed Bath and Beyond employees to know you're in Lewisville. So and the reason I say it's ten instead of nine, where you see the fifth one, so Valley Ridge Boulevard, that shows the west side of thirty-five, that's the traffic count on the west side. Right now, there's monument signs on the west and the east, and the west has more traffic. The east is certainly going to pick up in traffic when the extension opens the middle of next year, hopefully, weather willing. And at that point, it will probably approach or possibly even exceed the west. But right now, the west is busier. So we listed west, but understand that east also is an option, just not shown on here. So those are the ten locations that we think are worth considering. And we can come back to the slide in a moment if you'd like to deliberate on that. Cost estimate, and Eric did some great work calling around and talking to some architects and vendors and got some numbers, and it ranges. If they were real copper, this would be a very, we'd get one sign, maybe. Copper's expensive, and we have to replace it when somebody took it. So but the sign we're looking at here, we believe fifty thousand is a better estimate than the forty thousand we started with. That would probably include your your mid-range materials we're talking about. It would include some lighting, include some landscape treatment, and it'd be a very nice presentation for about fifty thousand dollars. I'm sure you can do the quick math and say, three signs times fifty thousand dollars, that's one fifty. We only allocated one twenty-four, and you're correct. The allocation doesn't cover if you wanted to do three or more signs. However, there is some money that is undesignated in the Lewisville twenty twenty-five fund that you set up that can be used to cover that difference. So if you wanted to do three and we're twenty-six thousand short, there's twenty-six thousand dollars available that can be used for it. Which brings us to, really, the reason we're coming to you today. We're wanting to get some input from you about locations. I guess really, design is first. Are you comfortable with the design? Do you like the design? Do you like the direction we're looking at? And then if you want to proceed with it, what locations, how many locations would you like us to pursue in this first round?
I have a question. In the drawing, the rendering that's in the packet, if the impression is that Lewisville is carved into the stone and here it's layered on tile.
It's supposed to be layered on. It's on little metal posts with a letter sticking out. Gives it a three dimensional feel out of the stone.
Okay, so that's just an illusion that it?
Yes. The model is more accurate.
Okay, all right.
And it even says on here, I thought it did, yeah, the Lewisville is mounted on rods. It's steel or powder coated metal, copper color mounted on rods.
Okay. Leroy, why don't you go ahead and start on this side? If you have any comments, can I?
Well, Mayor, I'm, I like the design. I like what the city is proposing for a design. As far as locations, I would like to see us go forward with the heaviest traffic areas. And if four oh seven is one of them and that involves text dot, then I would like for some other location to to be approved while we get approval from text dot.
Good idea. On the text I deal also, since we're dealing with them, we've talked about for years, the Purple Heart Trail, the sign that sits on the federal highway. If we can go and start talking about that, it's coming in the next few years anyway. And I saw a bunch of those today, but it is sporadic, up and down thirty-five.
To try to match up.
Greg?
Yeah, the design looks good. I do have a question. Four oh seven, east of Garden Ridge, is that, is there a Boulevard there?
There is a median that location.
Yeah, in fact, one of the picture that you have here is the one on Valley Ridge East, isn't it?
That's Valley Ridge. I think he was asking four oh seven.
Four oh seven, east of Garden Ridge.
Four oh seven, there is a median there, and our our traffic folks went out and looked at it and said it is wide enough to hold it, assuming the state okay's.
Great, and the location seemed to make sense.
I love the new design. I think this is great looking. I really like this. I think two and three would be my priorities, and I think six through nine are low on the list of priorities.
What, I know we've talked a bit about a northern focal point and a southern focal point on thirty-five. Where will we be funding those out of if not this set aside for for?
We would have to come back to you for funding.
Okay. Those are considered a separate project?
That would be a separate project, yes, sir.
As an example, one current location is Garden Ridge immediately west of thirty-five, which has been taken out as part of the construction. We did not propose replacing it because there is some treatments at thirty-five at Garden Ridge and the possibility of more treatments that still give you an entry peaks without necessarily this sign. Could always be added back later if we're not happy with the way the highway is.
So it was in the conversation? That's good.
Yes, sir.
I like it. I want it.
I think the design would be different, too. You'd have to have something that was taller and not as wide for I thirty-five, so.
I'm thinking an Alexander Calder like Mobile with a purple bird on one side.
A lovely.
Yeah. I'm not a design guy.
Yeah. Bill?
So I got room for four of these in the current budget, and you can maybe stretch it to five. Is that correct?
No.
We have one in the twenty-four thousand budget. We spent a few thousand on design. So if you supplement with the twenty twenty-five fund, we could do three. In theory, I guess you could do more, but it wouldn't be that recommendation.
So we can do three.
Again, that's the economy of scale when you're looking at these. The ranges from the contractors came in about your materials, and again, you might get a cheaper price for three than fifty. We just threw everything in there with lighting and whatnot. They could be less.
I'd say at a minimum, we could definitely do two. We might be able to do three to four, depending on the final pricing.
So you want to answer tonight on where?
We'd like to have one. At least, if you could give me an answer on the top two, it'd be very helpful.
I really need some time to think about that, I'll be honest.
Okay.
I can, I can give you that answer this week, but I need some time to think about.
No, I need to bring it back to the whole group.
Y'all have wanted to move forward this, right?
I like that.
And did you say two, three, and something else?
Two and three is the most important. Six through nine is not important.
I think Greg was, you and Sam Bob Park, weren't you?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I mean, I'm okay with three. Three I'm good with just because it's.
Well, one thing about in tab, at least today, it's not going to be torn out and rebuilt anytime in the next six months anyway.
I didn't hear, or you said, say that again?
Hmm?
Say that again?
That, that it's, it's not going to be torn out right now, at least. Now, you may get run over the first day it's open. I mean, it's there, but we can't really concern ourselves with that. So two and three, I think that's at least some kind of consensus here.
And then we can come back and we can work in.
Yeah, and then, because one is going to depend on what, A G L and text dot and all the other monies involved.
With two, I want our neighbors to the south to know when they're in Lewisville.
I understand.
I guess I can go with two and three. Now, I guess we'll come back and see what other money there is. The Valley Ridge, I think, is going to be an important location. I think it's going to be, end up being an important location in both directions.
Especially the east side, I think.
Well, we're here. I mean, this is just west side. We haven't talked about. I mean, we could, we could put one on the far west side of Castle Hills.
During, during fiscal year.
Far side.
During fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, that's targeted for the opening of Valley Ridge, that road will then become a primary access from the interstate to Railroad Park into the animal shelter. And I think at that point, the traffic counts will go up. That's also a new fiscal year.
Okay. I think I'm up with that right now.
So, okay, I'll go two and three.
Okay. What else you have to do?
It's all there.
Okay.
I would like to see.
It's towards Castle Hills.
Okay. Let's go on to the discussion of the regular agenda items and the consent agenda.
Proclamation, I've got clarification on that. It's going to be Neil tonight, and then every week it will rotate, send some form of fashion. And Neil may get the most of all of them right here, or there's going to be some nights there's going to be twenty.
It's proclamation season, so.
Okay, so it's whatever's there that night, and so we can, we can work from that. We'll take a lot of pictures there. And tonight I will do the university, Louisville Citizens University tonight. Okay, under E, item one, public hearing. Anything? Okay. Item two, public hearing.
This is Alex Payne Body. This has been before you before, and you remember during the last conversation, council requested this come back where the track of land of interest was really divided into two sections so that the front would remain fixed use and the back would be parking. And that's what's before you. That's it.
Any questions right now?
I'd like to see them come back.
And does this still have to meet because of the, didn't last time it had to meet a threshold of three quarters?
No.
Okay.
Three quarters?
Yeah, because it was denied at N Z.
No, that's correct.
It's been approved.
Oh, three quarters vote.
But the new one, okay.
Yeah.
But if we count right now, there's three quarter mention?
Yeah.
Okay, we're okay. Nobody can leave the table until we start to meet him.
You were talking about the vote, correct?
Yeah. Last time it was, this is a separate.
Because BC did not, last time you were correct.
How about consent agenda? Item three. Item four. Item five.
I have a question on four. What we are proposing here, has that been accepted by the other parties?
Uh, yes. Like fraternity, yes.
And the, I think forty-one cents or whatever the current fee is, includes a set aside.
It sets aside, it includes a surcharge that'll be put into escrow account.
Correct.
And at the time that lawsuit is settled, it, depending on how it settles, if that money would go back.
What is it, what is the surcharge in that, out of that?
It's the difference between sixteen cents and forty cents, I understand.
It is, it's a lawsuit between city of doubt.
I think it was a dollar amount.
Oh, a dollar amount, yeah.
Between sixteen.
It was originally about twenty-one cents, and there's forty-six.
Right now, it's sixteen cents, I think.
Sixteen is what we're charging today on the deal agreed.
Yeah, and then it goes to twenty-one.
Goes to twenty-four.
So it's the difference between twenty-four and forty.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's what the ballot, current ballot rate is without the surcharge.
Item five. Peter, do you have any comments on this?
Actually, our board has really been working hard. I don't know how many of you have been following, but the school testing nonsense where now grades are coming back and our kids are failing the star tests, and now they're regrading them, but it costs money to regrade.
How many other schools did this affect in state, district?
It doesn't, we're the first ones because we test earlier than most of the rest of the state, but we would expect if we're having a problem, we're kind of the canary in coal mine.
Yeah.
So that was, that was.
Probably, they didn't change the test.
No, no, and they, they, you can come down and look at the test, but it's protected by all this stuff, so you have to drive down there and take a look and who's, who's going to do that, so.
Well, thanks for bringing this up.
Appreciate the support.
Okay, regular hearings, item six.
Here.
Now, what is this again?
Both counsel. Both counsel.
Hypnosis on a pen?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So no changes on the item.
Oh, woozy.
Eric, at number six, I've kind of reconsidered my stance on that.
Make somebody have a heart.
We know where you live.
Dr. Goodrich, maybe get a seat.
I had a question on seven. The recommendation was odd. What, why did the recommendation say, caption above, with no conditions? Why did the recommendation say, caption above, with no conditions?
I can answer that.
You can answer this one?
Yeah, I can answer that one. Yeah, I wrote that. When I started, when I started the position, we basically would add conditions anytime there was something we felt we needed to get. Here, because the 96 agreement locks them in to our 1996 development ordinance, technology has changed since, and so it's kind of, we're trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. And so basically, we're just trying to be, here, we're just trying to fix something that is, just makes sense to us, and so we just thought no conditions are really necessary on that. So that was our approval recommendation.
Just when, when that language changes, I start going, what's going on there?
That's me, sorry. I changed.
No worries. Now I know.
Better than? Item eight?
So the codes that came before you a couple of meetings ago, presentation.
So if I understand this correctly, we're adopting a new code and we're also in the, I guess, 2012 code, building code? Is that, is that correct?
You're adopting a new code, but you're not keeping the 2012 code. You're adopting an all-new code except for the green code, which will come back to you in June.
Okay.
Anything else to know?
No, thank you.
Okay.
So this one, we do hope that Charlotte Wilcox is re-elected and that we'll be doing this back to you.
And for the, I think I'm going to miss my next meeting, which will be next week. She will, if she can make it, she will be there, and I will notify them. Our vote party. Item 10?
Julie, this is the one that had the two.
Since you have a senior status. John Med and Woody Meredith, I believe.
Yeah, both quality, great, great folks. I'd like to recommend Mr. Lang for that seat.
I would also encourage this to you.
Julie, they were both on the, on the Citizens University, because I didn't see that on Mr. Meredith's application. That's why I was asking.
I don't know why he didn't put on that. He was on, yes.
I do support Mr. Lang for the position.
Item 11?
Mayor, on this, I did have an email today, and it said each one of your places from the United Way, and they are asking rather than a staff person from our organization being appointed at Claire Swan in the backup memo, that we actually, that you guys consider appointing Chaz Parker, who's the CEO of CCA, just because of his knowledge and background of the homeless issue. And certainly, staff sees no problems with this recommendation. If you want to consider that. Claire's pretty busy, so if he's willing to take the clothes, that's done with us. And Councilman Gilmore has requested you to be on there as a council representative.
But if there's somebody else that wants to do that, then I don't have a, I don't have a dog in that other than on the behavioral health leadership team.
And they are kind of hand in hand.
I think there's a close connection there. I would support TJ. Okay, that's it. And we do have a closed session tonight.
If you'd like to do photos with the Citizens University, about 10 to 7 out there. Any council member that wants to be in that picture, just go out to the atrium. I'll get them gathered about 10 to 7.
Okay, 10 till 7 then. Okay, we'll reconvene at 7 o'clock in the council chamber.